Welcome everyone to our regularly scheduled Tuesday, December 19th meeting. I need a motion to amend the agenda.
What's up, Mo?
Okay, I have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Guns. All in favor? Six to zero. Ms. Newman is in the room.
To the policy agenda, we're substituting item 4E, resolution authorizing agreement with Pfafford Emergency Medical Services. To the consent agenda, we're adding 5N, resolution authorizing entry into a transition agreement with Mobile Medic Ambulance Service, also known as American Medical Response, and adding 5O, resolution reappointing August Parker, Ward One Representative to the Biloxi Planning Commission.
I move the agenda as amended.
Second. All right, we have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Guns. All in favor? We'll now move to our presentation agenda. Mayor Gillich.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We're here today. We're here to help with the partners of our city to work with the F. All these issues that are actually official. Transition is here, but listen, on behalf of the City of Biloxi, we've just certainly appreciate everything that you've done every time we've asked you, you've come through. This proclamation, whereas Connie Rocco has served the residents and businesses of Harrison County as District Five Supervisor since 1999, Connie's list of achievements in her life and career are lengthy, but she's always been recognized as an unwavering advocate for the people. Connie was recently elected by Mississippi Association of Supervisors to serve on the Legislative Committee, a committee responsible for advocating county legislation. Supervisor Rocco's career's decisions have set her apart as an historical female leader in the Mississippi Gulf Coast. She was the first woman to serve two terms as President of the Council of Governments, the Harrison County Utility Authority, the Legislative Committee for Mississippi Association of Supervisors in the county, and the first woman to ever serve as President of the Mississippi Association of Supervisors. Connie was a voice for the residents of Harrison County during her times, as well as good times as well as difficult times. She was one of the, on the front lines for locating support in the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina and helped oversee the response and relief efforts for the following, the 2010 BP oil spill. Now therefore, I Andrew Fofo-Gillich, Mayor of City of Biloxi, in recognition of our unwavering commitment to the residents of Harrison County, do hereby proclaim the 19th day of December 2023 as Connie Rocco Day. So it's your day.
Wait, Connie?
I really don't need a mic, but thank you so much. I'm humbled and blessed by the good Lord to be able to serve all of you and all of you council people and the citizens of Harrison County and Biloxi. And I'm very humbled by this. Thank you. I've never had a day named after me. I might tell my parent, my husband, it's my day. If y'all know Robert, you know he don't have, there's most, his days, most of the time. You know how you guys are. But anyway, thank you so much for, I'm very honored and I fell in love with Biloxi in 1989 for sure. I came here and I got here as quick as I could, but I came to the coast in 1973. So I've been here ever since and I fell in love with it when I opened the Seafood Industry Museum. Gerald Blessie hired me to manage it and open it and I went down there and I learned all about your culture and fell deeply in love with you, all the fishing boats and it was just the most romantic thing I'd ever seen. So thank you so much for allowing me to serve you and I appreciate it. God bless.
Another very special partner, we're gonna share the day today, but Beverly has been, you know, significant and both of y'all have been tremendous partners and supporters of our city. But whereas Beverly Martin has served the residents and businesses of Harrison County as District One Supervisor since 2016, Beverly's a dedicated advocate for tourism and economic development, has coordinated efforts, lobbied and obtained passage of, by the Mississippi State Legislature recognizing tourism as an industry, created an advisory board to the Harrison County and served as the Harrison County Tourism Commission and created Southern Gaming Summit Conference and Expo. Beverly was instrumental in upgrading parks throughout the community, including the splash pads at Hiller Park and Beck Park and the pavilion at Mark Bahanovich Memorial Park, as well as collaborating in numerous projects with the city and state such as the Front Beach Boat Launch and at the south end of Community Street. Whereas Beverly has served as the Harrison County Board of Supervisors President twice, served the President and Commissioner for Harrison County Tourism Commission, the Commissioner to the Mississippi State, Mississippi Coast Coliseum, the Executive Director of the Mississippi Casino Operators Association, and served on the Coast 2020 Commission. Beverly is also a founding board member of Cruising the Coast. Now therefore, I Andrew Fofo-Gillich, Mayor of City of Biloxi, for our unwavering commitment to the residents of Harrison County, do also hereby proclaim the 19th day of December as Beverly Martin Day. Beverly, wherever you are, it's your day too. Thank y'all.
Take a breath.
You're gonna have to share.
Share, yeah. Nick, I'm gonna ask you to come in, but we got to, as you know, we're in a tremendous project together and I'm gonna have to, Nick, to introduce the, Pfafford.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask Pfafford's group that's here, as y'all know, we announced that we've been going through this RFP process and it's on the council agenda, of course. So I was just gonna introduce Pfafford's team that is here to answer any questions that y'all may have during that item. On the left, starting here, is Terry Wages, Mr. Greg Pfafford, Shane Davis, and Freddie. Freddie, I'm sorry, I forget your last name, but they are here to answer any questions. They are the team that we've been working with, you know, to answer any of our questions, so feel free. I think they, they're well capable.
Thank y'all very much. And I think that does conclude my report.
No credit card.
Yeah, I thought so. Audit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, like to ask everybody from the ABL to come present our annual audit and your team has, you know, been wonderful to work with and so it's up to you have before now. Thank you.
I don't think my presentation's gonna be as exciting as you were. I'll try to make it as good as I can.
Well, what can you do with numbers? I try.
So what I've done is, we're here to present your 9/30/22 audit report, takes a team to do this audit and with me is Maria Saylor. She was a key player on your audit team and she's here to help answer any questions that you might have as we move through the presentation. If you look at, in front of you, you're gonna have a PowerPoint and also on the screen you'll have a PowerPoint that'll help us get through this as painlessly as we can. You have three deliverables from us. One is a report to those charged with governance, the stapled letter. There is, your annual financial report is a green bound report and then you also get a recommendations to management. On the report to those charged with governance, that's a standard letter, it's something that just outlines everybody's responsibilities, we have to give that to you. You can read that on your own time. And then also the recommendations to management have been discussed and provided to your management and that's something that I'm not gonna go over in detail during this presentation. Your financial report, the green bound report, has the audit opinion in it. It was an unmodified audit opinion on pages two and four. It's the highest level of assurance that you can get on an audit. Then also pages five through 16, is the management's discussion and analysis is prepared by your city management and it condenses everything in that bound report into a summarized form. So it's really good condensed information that you can look at as well. Governmental audit standards requires you to have two full sets of financial statements in your audit report. One is your government-wide financial statements and one are fund level. Government-wide is full accrual, just like a regular for-profit business, it has all receivables, all payables. The fund level is on a spendable resource model and it's like what you're used to budgeting with and managing the city on an ongoing basis. I'm gonna spend less time on the government-wide financial statement piece. I'm on slide eight. But I do want to point out a few things about this full accrual set of financial statements. And there are basically two main differences in the government-wide versus the fund level. One is all your capital assets are recorded. You have 2.8 million invested in capital assets. Also, your share of the net pension liability is recorded and that is an actuary determining amount that is provided by PERS and it actually increased this year 25 million compared to last year. So that's where you're gonna see that pension liability recorded on page nine. And that total amount of the, is 97 million for governmental funds and 5 million for business-type funds. I point this out because if you look further down, it shows you have a negative cash position, a negative net position, that's assets liabilities at the government-wide level. That's only because you're required to record that unfunded pension liability, that's not gonna require any cash outflow right now, but it looks negative because that's a large liability that's required to be put on the books. And then there's one more new thing in this financial statement compared to the prior year and that is you implemented GASB-87, which is the lease standard, and you recorded some new leases. You had 25 leases where you're lessor, that you had to record a receivable for and deferred inflows. And then you had 64 non-cancellable leases, that's lessee, and where you had to record a right-of-use asset and a lease liability. So that's a new item that you're gonna see in these financial statements. Other than that, I think we'll spend most of our time on the general fund when we get further into the presentation. On page 10, this is the full accrual presentation of the statement of activities. You see all revenue by department, all expenses by department, and your general revenues.
We'll put it in the budget next year.
So now, any questions on the government-wide before we start the fund level, which is what you're used to looking at, we'll work, look at that. The governmental funds start on page 12. You have three major governmental funds, general, capital projects, and debt service, and you have several non-major that are all grouped in their own column on page 12. Governmental funds had about 140 million in assets. On the next page, you'll see there were 32 million in liabilities and 139 in net position. When we get to the general fund, that's your main fund, that's where all city operations happen, on page 14. And you'll notice that, the first thing I want to point out is at the bottom of the page, your unassigned fund balance is actually $19 million. That's what you have left to use for city operations, so it is a positive number because the pension liability is shown in here as we discuss in the government-wide. This is just available spendable resources. Cash increased compared to the prior year, 4.5 million, and your receivables increased 49 million and that's related to that adoption of the new lease standards. All your long-term leases, that's lessor, are now recorded as receivables, so that's a big change. And then you also see an increase in unearned revenue of 5.5 million, bringing the total ARPA funds to 11 million that were unspent at the end of the year.
Could you repeat that again, what you just said, Ms. Marv?
About the 11 million? Unearned revenue?
About the unearned revenue.
Yeah, so unearned revenue is up 5.5 million related to the ARPA funds. When you receive grant in advance of spending it on what you're allowed to spend it on, it has to be recorded as unearned revenue until it's spent on allowable expenditures. So right now, 11 million total in ARPA. But that's as of 9/30/22.
Thank you.
If we move on to slides 16, that's where we'll see the revenues for all governmental funds, 106 million. Next page, expenditures of 90 million. And then on the last page, 18, you'll see the other sources, financing sources and uses of 12.8 million. In there is a $14 million debt incurred in 9/30/22. On page 19, we'll look at just the general fund. Overall revenues were up 6 million and you can see that just about every revenue category increased. It's not specific to one category. And with the increase in revenues, you also had increase in expenditures of 4.8 million. That's everything that is significantly different in the governmental funds. I want to take a minute to look at your proprietary fund, which is the water sewer fund. You'll see your cash was up 1.5 million. You had a significant increase in construction in progress related to new sewer additions and drainage. It increased 18 million. On your liability side, your AP was actually down and so was your debt as you started to pay down the debt. Page 24, you'll see that the city saw an increase in charges for services of 1.2 million related to water and sewer and operating expenses stayed approximately the same compared to 2021. And then you'll see a miscellaneous revenue amount of $536,000 related to overbilling from Harrison County Utility Authority, the over-under billing that they calculate, you got some money back. So that's where you're seeing that, that revenue. The proprietary fund, water sewer fund, is the only one that has a cash flow presentation in the financial statement. And here you'll see you had cash from operating activities of 5.1 million. You spent 2.6 on financing activities and another 8 million in capital related, I mean 88,000 in capital-related financing activities. Overall increase in cash of 1.6 million. So those are the financial statements, those are the biggest changes compared to 2021. On slide 27, there are several note disclosures. In the bound green report, I've referenced the pages here, this will give you more detail on the things that we just discussed. You can look at those on your own time instead of us going through them line by line here. And then also, you received federal money, you received, you spent 19.9 million in federal funds. Page 86 shows that most of that is made up of disaster assistance grants, but you did have other grant sources as well. We have to test the compliance with those grants and internal controls and we didn't identify any issues with financial statement findings and internal controls. You had one issue with non-compliance and that was just that the single audit was late. I just point out that Mississippi, state of Mississippi, single audit is also frequently late, so although I have to point that out to you, it does happen at times when it's not filed by the deadline. We also have another report, we test your compliance with state laws and regulations. Page 92 summarizes that and we had no findings. We were in compliance with state law on everything that we tested. And I already mentioned that you have comments and recommendations in a separate letter. Those were items that didn't rise to the significance to include in the bound green report, but were areas that you could improve with the city and that's something that your management has already gone through and can discuss with you as needed. That's all I want to present today. Any questions?
I think today we're just to accept the report and there'll be opportunities for them to get very specific at a later council meeting, right?
Letter. If I may, I'd like to point out one thing and help me track, help me track back, page, the electronic version that came this morning or last night, on page 68, 66 and 67 was an exhibit that was budgetary comparison schedule, general fund for the year 2022. Where would that be in the?
The budgetary schedule in here? That is a hard supplementary schedule that has to be included? Page 66 and 67.
Okay.
Was it in?
And the green book.
Oh, in the green book, I'm sorry, yes. It has to be included with the financial statements.
I asked the question because I just want to point out for the council, 2022 was an unusual year in that it was the first year that, as we came out of COVID, it was the first post-COVID year. And two, two things that we saw day-to-day at the, in the grassroots level is that we carried over a lot of vacancies in the personnel area and there was a lot of capital items that were ordered but not received and were not booked in this year. So if you look, when you look at that particular exhibit, one of the things that will jump out at you is that because of those two things, the, every department was below budget, every department but one, that was non-department. Non-department was the only part of the budget of the general fund budget where they were over budget, but all of the departments all came in under budget and it was because primarily those two things.
And that is a very important tool, your budget, for managing the city, so that's a, that's a good thing.
Question to you, Mike, you said the non-departmental budget, you took the insurance out of it, so why was that over?
No, that's in 22. This is 22, we didn't do that till last year.
So was the 3 million within the insurance for 22?
Yeah.
Three point?
Yeah. Just did it this year.
I got a question on 16, page 16, the 4.34 million, what does that represent? You said other miscellaneous, that's a lot of miscellaneous, 4.3 million. Page 16 on this, this one. When you just went through.
On the slides.
The general fund, under the general fund is 4.34 million.
Revenues.
Is the last item.
It's on page 16 of the slides, under general fund.
Let me get back to it on the screen. Know what the formula is.
I think what the council must look for is some examples.
So in the prior year, just, just while we're figuring out why it changed, in the prior year, that same category was 6.8 million. I don't have the class, I don't have in front of me what's grouped in that category, but this is, it's not a new line item, it's something that's been out there. What is it?
So we can look into that when we get back.
I can, I'll have to email you to, I didn't bring the, we have a report that shows all the accounts that are grouped in each line item and without that, I can't really dig any deeper than the presentation right now. But it is not a new line item and it's actually gone down compared to the prior year.
I was just trying to figure what type of money it was and what's considered, because you said miscellaneous and others, but that's a lot of others, 4.3 million, you know? So I was just trying to figure out where it came from.
What's happened is not in any of these major categories, it's not taxes, permits, intergovernmental, and that's why I think it's lumped in there, but I agree with you, it's a big number and I can get the answer and let you know what it is.
And then another one on page 24. 18.9 million transferred in, so we transferred from where? 18.9 million.
Which line is it?
Income before transfer, then you got here, transferred in 18,988,000 at page 24.
It's under income before transfers and special item.
It's transfers between your funds.
Say again?
Transfers between the city funds, within the funds, because the city has self-balancing books, funds, and these are transferred, money transferred between the two.
So you transferred that out of the general fund? 18.9 million, come from where?
Water and sewer received that much money in 20.8 million.
Yeah, that's payment from sewer account.
I'm sorry, 4 million. I was looking at capital contributions, I was on the wrong line. I still haven't settled, right? It's $4,694, is that what we're talking about, the transfers in and out? Those are capital contributions. I'm in the prior year, you're right.
That's about right because we've been burning those capital projects at about 1.2 to 1.5 million a month.
So there is 18 million in from the other funds, it's the capital projects? Yeah, capital projects.
Paying the dockets and those sort of things, a dock is paid out of government.
Because any, any projects that are water and sewer have to be recorded as assets in water and sewer. When that money originally came in, it went into one of your governmental funds and so it had to be transferred to the water and sewer fund.
So you said this had nothing, but this is dealing with the water and sewer? It don't say that on that line, so where'd you get that from, water and sewer?
Right at the top of the page, all water and sewer. Yeah, this is your water and sewer.
So everything we're dealing with on this page is water and sewer?
In that column.
Okay. I see that now. I see that at the top. Is any other money to be transferred, is all of this, if you transfer it somewhere, it's gotta come from somewhere, in and out number. So do you have any other money left to transfer back into the water sewer or is it depleted? Do you have any other money? You got 19 million you moved, is there any other money to move? Or is that zeroed out?
A fund?
Right.
No, that, this money came from a capital projects fund, not the general fund.
This is just the activity that happened over time. And as, as grant funds come in, have a project, as a project, you can voices and reimbursement for that project for your grant fund. As the grant funds come in, they go through the capital projects fund, that money then has to be transferred to water and sewer, where the project is actually.
But the 19 million, that's really a question for your management, but the 19 million is, we can't say if there's any in the general fund that is due, but we don't believe there is anything from the general fund.
So the 19 million should have been spent, is that what you're saying?
Not to spend all the money.
No, I'm saying it comes in for a project, so you gotta have the project completed with that 19 million.
Our fund is a separate fund.
I understand, but we talking, but you transferred this money in for our project, capital project in the water and sewer, so that project is either done or is it still open? I guess that's an answer.
Significant construction in progress still out there, that means the project's not completed.
That's what we need to find, what we spent the 19 million on, so anyway, that's just trying to find out. That's a quick summary. That's all.
I have, I have a question, Ms. Marvlich. In your comments and recommendations letter that you dated on the 12th, you reference that there were several outstanding checks issued in prior years that are outstanding, that hadn't been cashed.
And that happens?
Well, I know it happens, but how old are they? How much is it? How much is that amount?
I don't have.
I'm just.
There was almost like 10,000 dollars. They were admitted in shortly after the question, audit being corrected by 22, audit.
Okay. Alright, that's all I got right now.
Anything else? Thank you. We'll now move to our council reports.
We'll now move to our council reports. We'll start with Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, we had, uh, opening Saturday night with the Sweptan House, so they did a fine job, but, uh, the Hannah Takeover Frank, I tell you, was pretty good, and I wasn't, Fofo, he did one heck of a job with the Sweptan House. So that turned out great. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I, I'll tell you about George Berto, I mean, we're going to put him into, I have to put a resolution on the table to pass him up next week, the next meeting.
I talked to him already.
Right.
But, uh, no.
So maybe we have to make a resolution, we, we accept him, okay. And, uh, the other thing, I know we talked about this a couple times, the, the 3% on the pay raise, they have, you said it was like 1.7 million, that we looked at, uh, spinning down and doing that yet?
We're still looking at it.
Yeah. And I know a lot of people, Paul brings it up a lot, about the minimum wage, have we looked at moving the minimum wage to maybe $15 for entry jobs, or have you figured that out also?
Well, you know, the, the, the things that we've addressed, and I think there's a memo that talked about the, uh, longevity, kind of wrapping all that in to, to what we needed to do, so it's all kind of tied together on the cash flow and, and the revenue, we need to offset any kind of increase or any kind of stabilization of, of the salaries. I'm not ready to do that at this point, but that's still on my mind, I think with the audit being settled, with the longevity thing being understood, and that gives us an idea of where the adjustments need to be made in, in each department.
Well, I hope somebody will, you can resolve these problems by at least January sometime, put something in action one way or the other, let the employees know what we plan on doing with the longevity, the pay raises, whatever we can do, so just something, just trying to finalize that part.
I agree. And again, over the last couple of years, we, six and five percent increases we were able to do after the first of the year. So I don't know that, that, that's, uh, you know, that, in that same range, but everything needs to be considered and that's what we're trying to do, is put the numbers, numbers together and say what is sustainable.
All right. The last thing, congratulations, Connie, job well done, appreciate all your service. Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
All right, same thing, I want to extend my congratulations to Connie, thank you for all what you've done for the city of Biloxi and in particular, my ward, you and Beverly Martin, y'all have been a great, great support for the city of Biloxi, so thank you. I want to acknowledge our Christmas parade went very, very well, Santa Claus was there and they gave away over 500 toys in the, uh, in the, in the East Biloxi community, so I want to thank, thank Santa Claus for coming on out.
Felix Navidad.
Yeah, it's coming. All right, I would like to see Mike Leonard after the meeting, um, Mike Leonard after the meeting and acknowledge Peter looked like you had a haircut and you lost a little weight.
A little weight.
Yes, and other than that, Merry Christmas to everyone and Felix Navidad.
Ms. Newman?
I would also like to thank, not thank, congratulate Connie as well and thank you for making me look good all these years, you and Beverly as well, I'm just kidding, but, um, job well done and well deserved, enjoy your retirement, that's it.
Mr. Demming?
I have a few things. First, Ms. Rocco, congratulations on your retirement and thank you for the 25 or 24 years, whatever it was, that you put into service for the city of Biloxi especially. Um, Mr. Mayor, first things first, can we interface that screen with our screens? It would make it a lot easier when presentations are being given and we could follow through, I'm sure there's technology out there, I can almost assure you, I could download an app on any one of these tablets that would work.
I think it's doable, I mean, it's just, there's a website that it logs onto and should be doable.
Okay, thank you. Water bills, who is responsible for administering water bills?
Water Department.
Our water department? Um, I get a lot of calls, I mean, throughout years of, of service, I've got numerous calls and just out of curiosity, is, why aren't we using certain EFTs, right, electronic funds, transfers, AHCs, easier ways to pay bills without having to charge customers more money for a convenience fee? And the reason I ask is, is our bills tend to come out like when they're immediately due. We get the bill and by the time you mail the check, it gets to the city late, then they get a late charge and if we get, so the way to supplement that then is to, is to go onto our, our website and use a debit card, but then they have to pay a convenience fee. I, I think that it's, it's almost as if we're forcing them into paying a, a convenience fee to get away from paying a late fee because you get the bill out so late, right? And so if we could use electronic billing, it'd make it a lot easier and then some form of EFTs that would reduce the cost on, on customers for using it.
We just upgraded the, you know, utility system, we had some problems both in court and as well as, uh, munis, but yeah, that's the time to, to, to look at those options. We actually, a while back, uh, gave an additional time for that, actually the, uh, the discount that you get, not, not late pay but not a early pay, uh, situation, but we will look at that. See, there's got to be a better way to, uh, both bill as well as receive the funds.
Councilman, we, we changed the due date on all the bills about a year ago to give people a lot more time.
More time, yeah.
Because, because of the delay in mail. People have four ways to pay their water bill. One is to walk it into the office and pay it, one is to mail it into the office and pay it, one is to pay it by credit card, one is to pay it by, via bank statement. And, and right now, about half the people in the city are using those latter two items.
What is, what is, I'm sorry, what is a bank statement?
Bank draft.
Bank draft.
Auto draft. They give them a canceled check and they take it out every month.
And I can't, I can't remember without looking, but I, I believe there's at least a 10-day gap between when the bill is delivered and when the bill is due.
Well, you mean when the bill is sent?
Been pretty liberal about, you know, not charging, if, if we're late getting them mailed out, we extend the date. Very, the, the number of people paying late fees is very small.
We'll look at, at that, again, it's what the upgrade gives us in a position to, to take advantage of, you know, current situations.
Right, yeah, and, and it may be small, but I guess the term's relative, it, it's large enough for me to get more than one call, you know, about this, usually a month, so if we could look at utilizing some different technologies and making the system a little bit easier, but thank you, Mr. Leonard, I appreciate the update, and Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I was wondering if the administration has sent out a letter to employees?
I think we did.
Or is there one scheduled to come out, I believe, I don't know if it's been sent yet, but I'm.
There was a memo that I think Peter showed me today with regard to the explanation of the, of the longevity.
We're talking about the longevity pay, we sent a letter to each of the department heads and asked them to brief their, answer any questions in their departments, but we didn't do a citywide one at that.
Wasn't an individual letter.
I was under the impression that there was going to be a letter that was drafted and, and then sent sometime this week to all the employees.
We're working on the actual detailed numbers from the spreadsheet, but we didn't.
Okay, that's fine, so, so it's in the work, it works. The, uh, I, I've heard from some constituents that we, we continue to have some problems, I talked with Mr. Leonard yesterday about this, about the sound at the council meetings and sometimes it's just that people aren't close enough to a microphone or the microphone's not turned on and sometimes folks say there's interference or crackling. I rarely view the videos later, so I'm not aware of that, I don't know if anybody else has that issue, but, um, I'm, I'm hearing from a few constituents in my ward, I just wanted to make somebody aware of that. I'm proud to announce there are a few more Christmas lights on Pass Road. I don't know who's responsible, but another Christmas miracle, God bless us one and all.
Santa Claus.
There was an increase of, uh, 22% of the lights in Ward 5 on Pass Road, thank you, and I'm, I mean, I'm kidding, but I mean it sincerely, thank you very much. I do want to congratulate Ms. Rocco on her retirement and my ward is in her district and whenever I went to speak with her, after she was done yelling at me, she, she pretty much came through and her, her trusty sidekick, Liz Tibbley, but they're, uh, they're responsive and I, I appreciate her service and, and thank her for that. I also want to thank, I believe, Mr. Bett, this is your last meeting, done a good job from my perspective and I, I know you'll be a, a very successful supervisor, but I think you've represented your ward well and I've enjoyed working with you. Having, having said that, um, have a merry, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to congratulate Beverly and Connie on getting their recognition and thank you for coming today. Connie, uh, you've been a tremendous leader, there's a lot of adjectives and words that can describe you, certainly a spitfire and tenacious, when you set your sights on a goal, it usually gets achieved and it's been a pleasure, uh, working with you many, many years ago when I was just in the tourism industry, you and Beverly on the initiatives on keep your butts off the beach, which was an initiative to get cigarettes off the, cigarette butts off the beach, but it was certainly worthwhile and many, many just citizens, children, visitors along our Mississippi Gulf Coast, but also your influence statewide and I can go on and on, I ran into Billy Nungesser in Louisiana, Lieutenant Governor in Louisiana, all he wanted to talk about was Connie Rocco and, and how tremendous your influence was, so, so again, congratulations, thank you. I don't believe we've seen, seen the end of Connie Rocco's leadership, I, I have a feeling you're going to be involved with many, many things to come. Also, Nathan, I know this is your last meeting that you're presiding, you, you've become a, a good friend, I've admired your leadership as well and I know you're setting goals higher countywide, look forward to working with you, this is an extension of working with you on many projects as your district encompasses a, a wide portion of, of Ward 6 and, and 7 and other, actually Gulf, D'Aril and Biloxi, so I'm looking forward to that. Good announcement today, there's an outfit called Fishing Booker that has tab Biloxi is the number two winner of fishing destination in the world and so that's a, a pretty good, good award being recognized for that. I want to recognize the mayor's office and Public Works, I reported two things today, early this morning, Commerce Park, there's a monument that the landscape around it has deteriorated and also there was, uh, over in the Brentwood subdivision area, there was a tree with low-lying limbs that delivery trucks were hitting and both of y'all, both of those have been responded to today and that's incredible, that, that response time. The other thing I want to report, and this is a question for Jerry, Jerry Krill, I got a couple of things I want to ask you about. One is this, I've become, you know, I was very skeptical when we took up the label of tiny homes, when it was thrown on an agenda and I was trying to understand it, didn't have a lot of background on it, but since I've, I've educated myself a little bit with it, um, it seems to, that it could have a place, it's compelling, it's growing in population, could you give a 30-second, your view of it, because we haven't had a workshop on this and I'm sure it's going to start proliferating throughout the city and the other wards, can you kind of give your take on it real quick?
Well, tiny homes is kind of a misnomer for what's being built, tiny homes, the actual definition has to do with houses that can be moved from one place to the other, they're usually mounted on a, an axle where they can be moved in and out. The houses that you're talking about, the ones on Pops Ferry Road, are actually smaller residential homes, some of them will be one-story, some of them will be two-story, but these cottages, these little cottage communities are getting, um, very popular now and, um, we, we think that there's a demand for them, Elliot Holmes certainly thinks there's a demand for them, that's one of the reasons that he went through this process and got approval, but they are stick, stick-built homes, they have a permanent foundation, uh, these are not the movable kind, but there are also some very attractive designs, so I, I think you'll be proud once we get through.
Okay, I'd encourage everyone, do your homework on this concept, it's growing in population. One last thing, Director.
Yes, sir.
And listen, I appreciate your help on this, but I got to bring it up, we got a, a situation that continues month after month, almost day after day, on the Hickman Road and, you know, I'm in the position that I represent all of our residents, my constituents, whether it's business, residential or otherwise, but it, it just seems to be coming an issue, we've, we've been to court, we've, we've tried to resolve it in many, many ways, shapes and forms, is there any way that we can get this before the council to do, take immediate action in cleaning up that property so all the residents that live in and around that area don't have to be subjected to a business that continues to, to avoid being in compliance with, with our ordinances?
The, the David Hickman case has been resolved, that's the southern part of that property. The Thomas Hickman case, which is on the northern part of the property, I sent inspectors out there after we got the report that there had been an increase in, uh, equipment, there has been no increase in equipment, we've had pictures from August that we compared with pictures that we took today and there's been no increase, but it is a, a problem that we've had in court and we're not getting the resolution in court that we wanted, so I instructed the staff today to go ahead and let's bring it to council and get it resolved.
I want to thank you for that, there is no fencing, no barrier, that we require other commercial entities to follow, this is actually agricultural, as I understand it.
Yes, yes.
And, but, but we should take the next step to show all the citizens that, that we are doing the right thing. I thank you for that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. A few things, I want to, first of all, wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, um, hope that everyone has a great time with their families. Secondly, Connie, congratulations on your retirement, I know that, that Robert's going to be looking for a summer home somewhere to.
Tiny home.
Tiny home, something, but funny, funny story about Connie, I've been, I've known Connie since I was a kid, used to hang out at her house as a kid and, um, when I got elected, it wasn't, she didn't give me a good two weeks and I got a phone call and it was just like that friendship, I, I answered the phone and Connie's just like in my ear and I was like, Connie, Connie, slow down. I said, if me and you are going to stay friends, we're going to have to keep our politics and our friendship separate. And so from then on, when she called me, she'd always start with honey before she started hollering at me, so at least I got a honey first, but congratulations on your retirement and what Kenny says about you, you being well esteemed beyond just the county, I was in Jackson earlier this month for some supervisor training and I can't tell you how many people came up to me and spoke highly of Connie Rocco, seeking me out, saying, hey, are you the guy taking Connie's spot? And so thank you for your service to the county and I hope that you enjoy your retirement. Next thing is, on Thursday, there's going to be a, a planning commission meeting that includes a subdivision on the corner of Shortcrest and, um, Shortcrest and Oaklawn. And I don't know how quickly that will come before the council, after that is, is done, but I do request that, and I haven't even gotten any calls on this personally, but I do request that if there is any opposition from neighbors, that, that before this comes before the council, and I don't have a say in this yet, you know, one way or the other, but I just request that before it comes to the council, if y'all would wait until the Ward 7 person is elected or if it does come, I ask the council to possibly look into tabling it until that comes before, until someone's sitting in this seat that can get a reading on what those, what the residents have to say about that, that, that's, that's all on that. This meeting today is kind of bittersweet for me, I'm sad that today will be my last meeting as the Ward 7 council member, but at the same time, I'm excited about the future. I would like to thank the residents of Ward 7 and the residents of the city of Biloxi for allowing me to serve you for the last six and a half years, it's been the highest honor of my professional life to date. I love my community and the city and I've always tried to represent everyone with honesty, integrity, class and with your best interest at heart. It's not a job, and my wife's here today, it's not a job that I've taken lightly, I promise you. I would like to thank Mayor Fofo Gilich, his administration, the department leaders, the city employees. the city employees, for all working with me to help accomplish many long-term goals for Ward Seven during my time here. There's still a lot to be accomplished, there's no denying that, but without your help, we've made great progress over the last six and a half years. We can just go down the list of projects and projects that have been done, that were on that, that master plan, and, and things that weren't on that master plan as well, Eagle Point Park being one of them, which is a huge accomplishment, but without your help, none of that would have been possible, and it's been an honor to work with each of you. To my fellow council members, when I was elected two terms ago, each of you had already served a term, except for George. He was, I think he's been here since we were incorporated in the city of Biloxi.
True.
But I was the new kid from Wool Market, and I appreciate y'all accepting me. We haven't always agreed on everything, but we've worked together, and we've seen great progress in the city of Biloxi because of that willingness to work as a team. I was doing an interview, and this is something that I brought up a lot recently, I was doing an interview with Supertalk this morning, and one of the things that I brought up was when I started in 2017, we went right into budget talks, and our budget was $55 million from our, our three main sources, basically, and this year, we passed a $74 million annual budget, which is huge. It's around, somewhere between 25 and 30% increase in six years, which is amazing for a city of 50,000 people. And so we've seen great growth and great progress. I'm appreciative of the friendships that we've developed, that I've developed with each of you, and it's been an honor to work together with you, and it's something that I'll cherish for the rest of my life. Of course, I would like to thank the council clerks, Carrie, Michelle, and Tanner. They're great assets to the council and to this city. It's been a joy to work with you, and thank you for making my job easier. My wife and one of my sons is here today, and I don't think they've ever been, well, my son came to one council meeting, but in six and a half years, I had to quit to get him to come to a council meeting, but they're here today, and I'd like to thank them for, for putting up with, anyone that's elected knows that in the social media world, and when you make a decision, there's going to be people that's not happy with it, and with social media, that's magnified now, and, and seeing the things that people say and things like that, it's, thank them for putting up with all the extra, the Facebook extra, but more importantly, I would like to thank them for all the doors that they have knocked over the years. Without them, I couldn't do it, and they're always by my side, and I appreciate them very much. Today was my, well, today is my last meeting. I'm still going to be active, doing everything that I can to help Biloxi become a better place to live, work, play, and to raise our families. In my new role as county supervisor, I will continue to work alongside each of you to assist in any way that I can. I'm a firm believer that, and I know this is cliche, but I'm a firm believer that teamwork makes the dream work, and I will do everything within my power to make the dream of a brighter future for Biloxi come to pass. Again, it's been the honor of my professional life to serve in this position and to work alongside each of you. I said this at our inauguration a couple of years ago, and I still believe it today. In Biloxi, we have a past to be proud of, a present that we should embrace, and a future that we should all be excited to be a part of, and although I won't be in this seat, I'm excited to be a part of Biloxi's future. Thank you for allowing me to serve. And with that, Nathan?
Yes, sir.
A couple of quick things. I want to thank the administration for thought. The people on St. Peters and St. George and Mill and Wilkes are so excited, you've greeted the street, they know good things are coming. Second thing, Nathan, I know you're leaving. Have we set a date? You'll be officially out of here in January, correct?
Yeah.
So have we set a date for the election?
Stacy, Stacy Thacker takes care of that, I believe.
Okay, so that'll be announced?
Yes. Yeah, I think, I think you can't, I don't know, I don't know, that's, that's a lawyer or Stacy Thacker question.
I think the second week in February.
Okay.
So you've got 25 to 45 days?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think, I think the law says, but don't quote me on this, I think the law says that once the seat is vacated, it has to, a special election has to be announced, announced within nine days of that vacated seat, and then you have 45 days from that date to have an election. So whatever that Tuesday would fall on is what I believe is the law, but don't quote me on that.
That'll work.
Hang on to it.
One other thing? Thank you, Nathan.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Thank you. We'll now move to citizen comments. We have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. Whenever you come forward, please sign in at the sign-in sheet at the table and state your name and address. We will be strict with the three minutes, so when the bell rings, your time is up. We will start on my left side of the room and your right side of the room. My left side and your right side, is there anyone on my left side that would like to speak? Please come forward, sign in, state your name and address, please.
I'm a resident of Harrison County. I was here before y'all in September. I'm not here to discuss any EMS provider. That's not what I'm here for. I'm here for the same reason I was in September. I'm concerned about a fragmented EMS system in our county. Back in the early eighties, there was vision and the leadership to create a county-wide EMS system. I still believe that is true today. It is difficult for me to understand, is when I talk to others, the leadership across this coast, nobody agrees with a fragmented EMS system, but yet we continue to move forward in that direction. Forty years in public safety, and being a retired police chief, we have the leadership in this room, we have the leadership in this county. What I don't understand is why we cannot move forward with one single wide EMS system. We do not need a fragmented system. The leadership is here in this county. I'm not going to sit and discuss what I discussed in September about all the concerns that I have, but if we cannot get in a room together in Harrison County and set our differences aside, and then we potentially have three different EMS providers in this county, how in the heck do you think an EMS for-profit is going to sit down and discuss mutual aid with one another? They can say, yes, we'll do it, but I know better. And I'm asking y'all, and I know it's difficult, the jobs y'all have is difficult, but I'm asking y'all, as a resident of this county, don't put additional taxes on me and the rest of the residents, citizens of Harrison County because of subsidies, some subsidies have to be provided because we have a fragmented EMS, EMS system in this county. It's not fair to the citizens. I understand your priorities are Biloxi. I understand that. I get it. But I can tell you right now, I am disappointed in the leadership in this county that we had not sat down to discuss one EMS provider for this county. I don't care who that EMS provider is. That's not what I'm here about. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service, and thank you for your continued work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left side, your right side, that would like to speak? My left side, your right side. Anyone on my right side, your left side, that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name or sign in, and then state your name and address, please.
My name is Mark Siemens. I'm a resident of Biloxi for 28 years. I'm here to talk about the trash situation on the old Broadwater Golf Course. I've spoken with the mayor, Dixie, off this hill, shown pictures, and nothing is happening, and it continues to get worse. There's trash bags, tires, homeless people, and it's just getting worse. I brought some photographs that I want to share with you, and hope some will take the action to clean this mess up. Let me pass these out, and I know you can't do anything today about it, but like I said, this is not new, and...
He's got three minutes.
I told him to pause, I thought.
Same photos.
They all had the same thing.
Sir, if you would, please speak into the microphone so it'll be recorded into the minutes.
Yes. I've contacted code enforcement numerous times. Code enforcement told me that they're running up the ladders as high as they can bring it, and nobody's taken action on it. I've personally spoken to the mayor, I've personally spoken to Dixie, Mr. Tidgill's aware of the problem, and there's something to tell me, please, why no action's been taken. I'm all ears.
Okay. This isn't a question-and-answer session, but if you want to hang around after the meeting, we'll be more than happy to discuss it with you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else on my right side, your left side, that would like to speak? Please come forward. If you will, please sign in and then state your name and address, even though we all know you.
I've already signed in. My name's Steve Delahoussaye, 2580, Route Palafax, Ward Five. Later today, you'll vote on a recommendation to accept a new ambulance provider for the city of Biloxi. I'm here today to ask you to postpone that vote and to carefully consider your decision. In doing so, I'd like to ask that you consider the following facts. AMR, American Medical Response, and its predecessor companies have faithfully served the Biloxi uninterrupted for 55 years. AMR has proven its ability to provide unwavering disaster services to Biloxi throughout that time. Hurricane Katrina devastated our city on Monday, August 29th, 2005. As Vice President of AMR on Friday, August 26th, I placed one phone call to AMR, and within 24 hours, an additional 100 ambulances arrived to assist. As a result, no one died in any hospital or nursing home on the Gulf Coast because they were all evacuated by Sunday evening. No other company in the world has this capability. Since 2007, AMR is the only ambulance provider to have an exclusive contract with FEMA to provide disaster medical services for emergencies. AMR is the most extensive mutual aid capabilities in the country. We have grown to be the largest EMS service in the United States with our humble beginnings right here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. AMR has existing EMS helicopter stationed here in the area for medevac missions. No one else has that capability. It's been stated that there's mutual collaboration between AMR Air Ambulance and the newly contracted services. I am unaware of any such collaboration. AMR is the first and only service to receive national certification with zero deficiencies. All of our dispatches are certified by nationally accredited entities. No other entity can make that claim. We have our own dispatch center located here on the coast, not in some out-of-state location. These are but a few of the reasons I ask you not to vote today on a new provider. Instead, I ask that you carefully study the recommendations of the ambulance selection committee, ask to meet with each applicant, evaluate each qualifying proposal on its own merits, and make your own decisions. This is no different than at the police or fire department where to ask you to vote on privatizing their departments, which some cities have done, by the way. Why would you not want to see for yourself what services are being offered to the city? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delahoussaye. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Anyone else in the room that would like to speak? All right, if not, citizens' comments are closed. We'll now move to the policy agenda. Ordinance A.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to recreational vehicle parks.
This was, this was moved by Mr. Glavine?
Who seconded it?
And I seconded.
Okay. Yeah, I moved this, and eventually we tabled it so we could work on it a little bit. Do we have any progress on working on this to make sure it kind of has been adjusted a little bit? Yes, sir.
Yes, what the, what the changes in this ordinance reflect, number one, it actually defines what the large vehicles are that are governed by this, you know, the large trailers, trucks, those kind of things, RVs, and what this does is, requires anyone who is going to use their property for RVs during a Tier One event, which is the largest events that we have, they would have to come in and present their application to the Community Development Department at least 60 days in advance to show how they're going to set up the RVs on their property. This shows that they will be allowed to have one recreational vehicle for every 750 square feet, just to give you an illustration of that, if they have a half an acre, they can have up to 29 units on there. This also sets the fee for what would be paid to the city for them to use their property for that. Of course, there is a $250 vendor charge for using their property to rent it out, but then there's also, in this ordinance, a $40 per space per night charge for each RV that's going to be set up on that property.
Director, can I ask you about that? Just briefly. So how do we, I mean, how do they charge that, and how do we collect it, and how, I mean, how do we police that? How do we verify that?
Well, one of the things that we would have to do is to, since they are going to be required to come in at least 60 days in advance, we would send them to the DRC Committee. The DRC Committee meets every week, so it would not delay anyone from going through, and then what we'd do is, depending on how many units they have set up, we would collect in advance for however many nights they plan to be there.
So I understand the 250. I understand how to collect that. They come in, they want to get permitted for special events, the 250, I understand. How do we know, one, how many RVs are actually going to have on that piece of property? Two, how do we know how many RVs are going to stay? The length of the special event, and then, three, as they collect those fees, how do we know they're not going to put it in their pocket or, or do something else? I mean, how do we, that piece, I don't know how we're going to be able to police or audit or, or, you know, collect that.
Well, in coming to the DRC Committee, they would have to provide us with a site plan showing exactly how many RVs they're going to put on the property. You know, we would have to take their word for it, you know, but then we would compare that to make sure that they're not... compare that to make sure that they're not exceeding the number that's allowed in the ordinance changes here, exceeding the seven-hundred-and-fifty per square feet. There's also a provision in here that says that they have to be at least eight feet apart, you know, to accommodate fire separation requirements.
Yeah, but I don't know how they know unless they sell out in advance. So if I have a piece of property and it's, I can put twenty RVs, and I come and fill out my application, say I'm only going to have ten, and they have twenty, I, I'm trying to, that's difficult. I mean, it's almost like the honor system, you know, in this situation. Is that what we're going to, I mean, is that how we're going to do this?
In trying to determine how we would enforce it, we would have to deal with the property owner on it, you know, which is, which is what we do on every piece, every code enforcement issue that happens in the city, whether there's a renter on the property or not. We always deal with the owner of the property because they're the ones that will bear the financial burden of anything that's in violation. They're the ones that will have to pay the fine, so...
Okay.
But depending on what they present to us, we would charge the fee, we would write them a receipt at the department, so nobody's going to pocket the money in the department. We'd have to give them a receipt for what they paid before they actually went out and set up.
I'm just curious if we should consider a capacity fee versus what we believe the property could hold. So come up with a formula and say during the special event, you can put up to, I'm going to use the arbitrary rate, twenty, and then we take a percentage of twenty, and that's what we collect, and whether they hit, hit that number or exceeded, we got, we got what we think is reasonable. Because they're going to underestimate, they'll probably underestimate if they don't have all their sites sold.
And we deal with that all the time, you know. Permit fees for anything are based on cost of construction, and we get a lot of people that come in that try to lowball the construction cost so that it'll reduce the size of the fee, but...
Okay.
We could, we could consider that, the capacity issue that you're talking about.
All right. Thank you.
I think that most, most of the things that we had addressed in this ordinance, or that the questions that we have raised have been addressed, referring to what Kenny's talking about. So let's say that I own a piece of property that's an acre on the beach, and I can put forty RVs on it, I'm just, but sixty days out, how many people actually know that they're going to be staying on this property and have contacted the owner and said, "I'm going to be staying on this property," and be able to determine that sixty days out? I didn't even know if I was going to cruise on the coast or not this past year until the week of. And especially local people who are putting their RVs on these properties, wouldn't it be better to collect the $250 fee and then a little bit closer? So that establishes that this piece of property is going to be used for this event. It establishes that you have a list of all the properties that have, have met that sixty-day deadline, and then as it gets closer, maybe have a week, you know, you have to turn in how many are planning to be there within a week. But, but I think that we sort of put, put people in a box whenever we're saying, "Okay, sixty days out, you got to tell me exactly how many RVs is going to be there, and you got to pay me now." How many property owners are actually going to pay that fee, whatever that ends up being? I know it's $40 here, and I know that some people in the council have concerns, but if it's $40 and you have a huge piece of property, and they're going to, let's say that you have eighty RVs that's going to stay there for eight days, that, I mean, you're talking several thousand dollars that people aren't going to be willing to pay sixty days out, not knowing if those people are for sure going to come or not. And many of them, many people haven't even contacted these owners that far in advance to, to know that. So I think that the $250 fee is fine. However, I don't know that collecting all that money upfront is, is going to be, I think it's going to hinder more than it's going to help.
I think DRC is where, you know, you can short...
I mean, you can establish how many can go there, but I think that, you know, that would be a closer-to-the-event type deal as far as collecting the per RV fee. Um, I, I just think that, I think that we're sort of shooting ourselves in the foot by trying to collect this fee upfront, because what we're going to end up having is we're going to have a diminished, a diminished event because people are going to be like, "I'm going to keep my RV at home," and, and I know that's not what we're trying to accomplish, but I think that that's what we're going to accomplish by going around about it this way, having to, to determine how many RVs are going to be on a property and then pay for it in advance. I'm fine with the $250 upfront for using the property, but I have a problem with paying that far in advance per RV, because many of these people are local, and they don't know until the week before, or maybe a few days before, that they're going to be out there.
Yep. One of the things that we discussed is that, you know, we're just going to have to flood information on venues, you know, to make people aware that there are changes to this because you've got a lot of property owners up and down Highway 90 that look forward to that time.
We could, we could send, we could send a letter out to all of them, a hundred and twenty days in advance to, we can identify the empty lots and send, send a letter on the $250, but I still don't think that that takes care of the problem of me paying for eighty RVs for eight days in advance. I just, I don't think that's going to work.
So if you, what that does is it, and of course, you know, part of what I have to do is figure out how are we going to do this in the event that somebody doesn't comply? What that would do is put us in a position to where if someone did add more RVs to the property, that we would have to write a citation to the property owner for the amount that we did not collect, and then let the judge add that as a fine to the property owner.
And I'm fine with that, but my, my point being that we don't know how many RVs is going to be on each one of these lots, and neither does the property owner sixty days in advance. That's, that's my, everything else, I know we've sort of combined A and B, or whatever the, the two ordinances into one, so the second one's not even relevant anymore, but, and I have no problem with the ordinance overall. I just think that doing it this way and requiring to collect the money, especially for these larger parcels, sixty days in advance, is going to create issues. I think if we stat, the $250 fee establishes that this lot is going to be used, and we set that per-unit fee closer to the actual event. That's just my recommendation. And I guess I can start. Anyone else have any input? Mr. Demme?
First, where's the $250 fee? It's not in this ordinance.
No, it's a, it's separate. It's a vendor ordinance. In other words, if you're a vendor, our, our other ordinance requires that a vendor has to pay a $250 fee.
So are we, are we requiring people with these lots that are going to allow RVs on them to pay a $250 vendor fee plus this fee?
We did this past year, yes.
I mean, that's outrageous. I mean, this is $40 per space per night plus $250. That's a lot of money. I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what people charge to allow an RV to sit on their property, but I can't imagine that that wouldn't be extremely deterrent to letting anyone, or why use my property? I'm going to pay the government more money than it's even worth dealing with the hassle and the trouble. I mean, if we are trying to dissuade people from coming to Biloxi like, like Mr. Barrett stated, I think this is a great ordinance, but I don't think that's our intention. I think if we change this in some way to better reflect what we're attempting to do, then dissuade everybody from using their property for events here, I don't know that I can support $40 per night per space regardless of the timeframe. The timeframe does pose a problem, but just that amount of money as an application fee, right? Can you still deny that fee?
You, you mean the $40 per night?
It says application fee, right? So that would, I would infer as somebody that wanted to use my property reading this, this law, that that's, that fee can be declined or denied. Like, you may say, "Here's your application fee, but now we're going to deny your application." Is it non-refundable? It doesn't state in this.
The fee, under the other regulations concerning applications, the fee is a part of the application, and the ordinance says that it has to be a complete application in order for us to process it. So if somebody submits an application and they don't submit the fee with it, that's not a complete application, so we wouldn't be able to accept it.
But if they complete, even if they provide you with a complete application, can you deny it? Is, is there a basis for denial?
Well, I mean, it, it depends on what's not there. Again, if, if the application is complete, but the fee's not paid, then that's still considered an incomplete application.
If the application is there and the fee is paid, do you have, is there any discretionary basis to deny the application once it's paid and everything's there? Or are you saying that they've complied with every rule, and that there's no way that you could deny it, and that's why it's an application fee?
They pay the application fee, but you know, there could be other criteria once we get it to DRC. And look at it, there, there may be something that fire department's not happy about, that there are some RVs that are too close together or something like that. So it could be denied on a, maybe a life safety type...
Would that not be...
Not the application itself.
But the distance between RVs is covered in the application because they have to submit a plan to you that demonstrates that there is, there is, so that's my point then, it's not an application fee, it's just a fee, because at that point that they're submitting something that's completely completed and within the, within the bounds of the law, then it could not be denied unless it wasn't actually completed properly.
Right. You're submitting, you're submitting the application, you're submitting the fee, and then you go to DRC, and we determine whether everything is in compliance with what is in here, if y'all vote to approve this, this ordinance.
So at that point, they could be denied, and it's not refundable, I'm assuming? It doesn't state that in the ordinance, whether it's refundable or not refundable?
That hasn't been discussed about whether or not it's refundable or not.
Well, I think that's an important topic that we should discuss before we...
I can tell you this, that if someone comes to us to build a, a house or a, a commercial building, and for whatever reason the, the application is denied, now this doesn't include whether they have to pay a fee for advertising or something like that, but if for whatever reason the application is denied for that house, then yes, we do refund that money back to the owner, the applicant.
And, and I appreciate that, and I think that's the right thing to do, but is there, is there statutory provisions that require the city to return that money, or do we just do it out of the kindness of our heart?
None that I'm aware of. That might be a exact question.
That's something we can look into, at least as far as the, as far as the, there's other developments and whether or not that, that actually is refundable. But if that's something that's done in the past, I'm sure we've, or at least, or there's more than likely something on the books that has that...
More than likely doesn't satisfy my curiosity at all, Peter. But I think I'm going to, after discussion, simply for these couple of reasons, whether these fees are refundable, what, what basis the fees are, I'm going to ask to table this so we can get the, we can get a resolution on what, on how the city's going to handle this, the fee provision. All in all, I don't favor this fee. I think this fee is exorbitant. $40 per space per night plus the $250 vendor's fee, that is, I, I think that is, is a deterrent in nature, and I think it's going to be more detrimental to our events in the city of Biloxi than it's going to be beneficial for the city of Biloxi. I yield.
Mr. Lawrence?
I believe or not, I agree with Robert. I think you, you actually are hurting crews on the coast. And then you got to look at when we have a Mardi Gras parade, if somebody backs up their truck, is that considered a vehicle? You going to charge them $40 a day to watch the Mardi Gras parade?
Mardi Gras is going to be one of the, one of the hardest events to monitor and enforce, because those people usually come in like the night before, and a lot of times, you know, we've been sixty-day advance notice, a lot of those people may not realize that they're coming till the last minute. So the one-day events are going to be a lot tougher to monitor and enforce than the multi-day events are.
And that's a good question, right? Who's going to monitor this?
Well, if it's passed, it would fall under code enforcement to make sure that...
On who?
Under code enforcement.
Y'all don't work on the weekends, so what are you going to do on the weekends? Nothing, nobody's going to work?
Well, Mardi Gras on Tuesday, we may have to do it, but we, a lot of these things that we enforce, we work with the police department, they help us out with it, and fire department also, so it's kind of a multi...
Thank you, Jerry. Like the eight-foot, what you going, what are you going to call it? An RV? Not an RV? Are they eight days, two days, three days? Even Mardi Gras, they come in normally that, the weekend with Neptune, they come in on that Saturday night, so they're Saturday, Monday, July, into Mardi Gras. So I just see number problems after problems with this. Can't support this at all.
Mr. Guns, anything? Ms. Newman? Mr. Tisdale?
If I recall correctly, and I may not, you know, you know me, we talked about a $250 fee, and I think, Mr. Barrett, you'd said, "Well, if it's a one-day event, you're paying $250 bucks, but if it's a cruise on the coast, that's nine or ten days, you're still paying the same amount." And I understood you to say, "And this is my perspective, so bear with me," was that, you know, that's not really equitable. The length of the event ought to be considered, so, and I'd, I'd ask for input from everybody, and thank you for sending yours in. So I met with Peter, and we talked about that, and he said, "Well, your perspective doesn't match Nathan's." And my perspective was, Mr. Glav, and I like doing it, explaining it in this manner so folks can follow, it's easier. The property owner, I'm going to manage his property for cruising the coast. And at the last meeting, it was, "I'm going to pay $250, and I'm going to be good to go," was my understanding. And then we talked about, "Well, if it's a one-day event, it shouldn't be $250 bucks," and I think that your, the number you pulled was $40 a day. I assumed that was for me writing the check. So if it's cruising the coast, I'm going to write a check to the city for $400 bucks, and that's it. It's all the city gets. And I, I had asked, as I recall, would there be any charge to the RV owner? And the answer was, "Well, no," or, "Well, we, we might discuss that at a later date or something." Anyway, the point I'm trying to make is, we're, in effect, if this is approved, we're charging RV, the individual RVs, whoever's driving it, owning it, is going to pay $40 a night of cruising the coast. Kenny's going to pay $400 a night for his RV, I'm going to pay $400 a night. I would prefer that we just deal only with whoever is the property manager and look at just either a flat fee or a prorated fee, so if it's...
I, I agree with you. I think this is the only way to adequately manage this situation. The way that it's, that it's, I, I think that what we do, and I think sixty days is still too far. I think more like thirty. And I don't think that they should be charged a vendor fee. I think we come in and we have a minimum of, let's say, a hundred bucks. So if it's for Mardi Gras and somebody's using their piece, piece of property, because we do have, if we're going to monitor this, they pay a hundred dollars minimum, but it's $40 a day, or whatever the council agrees on per day, so that would, you know, for Mardi Gras, that would be a hundred dollars, even though it's a day, or a day and a half, or whatever. But for cruising the coast, that would be $400. Then you don't have to say, "Hey, I'm going to have twenty RVs sixty days out," or "I'm going to have twenty-seven RVs," or "I'm going to have seventeen," because these people don't know. I think a per-day fee per piece of property is, is the only way that this is going to be, I, I mean, I just don't think that it can be managed whenever you say, have to, it was just like last time we talked about this. We talked about, they're going to have to bring a plat showing where every RV is going to be set, and well, these cats don't even know who's coming, when they're coming, when they're leaving, anything like that. There's no way to do a plat, and I don't think that there's any way to say, "Hey, I'm going to have twenty-seven or thirty-seven or whatever RVs on this piece of property." I think it's the only way to, to adequately implement this and manage this is a daily fee with a minimum and a maximum, and, and leave it at that, and narrow that window down to thirty days. I mean, a lot of these people, they don't live on this property, and they're not aware that it's going to be used or how it's going to be used until a lot closer to the date. And the one thing that we've said from day one, we want to give the, the chief every, everything that he needs to police these events correctly, but we don't want to hinder the events. We've said this from day one, we do not want to do anything to hinder the events that are bringing literally millions of dollars into our city and doing things the right way. And so I would say, if, I have no problem implementing this, but I think that we need to make some amendments to it and, and get it out the way. Just, just my two cents, make some amendments to it and get it out the way is, is what I would recommend.
So, as I was saying...
Sorry, Nathan, that's all right.
So taking that into account, I would prefer to see something similar. Maybe it's a hundred, a hundred, minimum of a hundred dollars for a single day, and look at $40 to $50 per day for multiple days, and, and the parcel manager, is my phrase I'll use, would pay that. RV owners don't have to pay anything. My assumption is that if, if I'm concerned about the increase to me as the parcel manager, I'm just going to tack that on to whatever RVs are coming to park on the parcel I'm managing. I, I think it, it's helpful to say you need a site plan, or there's a formula for calculating it's seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet per RV. Good, then you can determine the maximum number of RVs per parcel. So that's, that's helpful in, in planning, I think, for logistics and everything, but the only charge would be... the only charge would be to the parcel manager, and that amount, whatever the minimum is, a hundred bucks, and maybe forty or fifty dollars per day for multiple days. The other thing is, that way, I don't, it, it doesn't bother me if twenty seven people are on this hundred pad location, or twenty seven show, I, I don't, doesn't make any difference to me, all we'd, all we'd collect this next year would be that amount, that flat amount, whatever's determined, I, to me, that seems more reasonable, it may be for multiple days, I think the example used last week was forty dollars a day, I think, could be fifty dollars a day, I don't think it needs to be any more than that, that generates some funds, be easy to calculate, you know, to the city, but I, I think, as, as some of my friends up here said, fifty, forty bucks a day, per day, to an RV owner, I, that's too steep, I, I, I think, I think we hurt us more than help ourselves here.
Mr. Guns?
Yeah, based on what I've heard across the council is, we practically rewrote the ordinance just a second ago, and so I'm gonna push to, I'm gonna move to table this for a workshop, so we can go ahead and do the workshop properly, and we can have a clean version come on out.
Do you wanna make a motion for A and B?
I wanna make the motion on A and B to table it for a workshop, so we can go ahead and implement what we need to implement.
Okay, we have a motion to table, and schedule a workshop, moved by Mr. Guns, second by Mr. Demming, any discussion? All in favor? Hold on, how long do we wanna, okay, so, we can vote on this, and then we can set the date for a workshop, correct?
Set the date.
Subject to call.
Subject to call, absolutely.
We'll schedule the workshop once we vote, if it passes. Okay, all in favor is the motion, of the motion? Seven zero, okay, do y'all wanna set a date for?
I'm gonna say the, 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 the second meeting of the year.
So that's a one thirty meeting, do you wanna do it before or after the meeting?
What do you think, guys?
Whenever, whatever.
Do it right after.
After, so, so, okay, so following the, that would be the sixteenth, January sixteenth meeting, you'll have a workshop following the meeting. Okay, all right, we'll now move to resolution. C?
Resolution to appoint Dixie Newman as president of the Biloxi City Council.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, discussion, all in favor? Seven zero.
Thank you, guys, I'm honored, once again, and Nathan, all I have to say is, I know that your new district is not in my ward, but I look so forward to you spending ninety percent of your budget into my ward. All right, we'll go on to resolution D, Ms. Carrie.
Resolution to appoint Paul Tisdale as vice president of the Biloxi City Council.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Felix.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nathan, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous votes, congratulations, Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you.
Condolences. Moving on to resolution E.
Resolution authorizing agreement to provide advanced life support and basic life support services with Patford Emergency Medical Services.
Do we have a motion?
I made that motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Lawrence, do we have a second?
I'll make that second.
All right, second by Mr. Tisdale, do we have any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, Buffalo, you're explaining exactly what we're doing with this one.
So, yes, sir, so if you remember back in June, we established our own EMS district to have better, better control of what was going on in the city of Biloxi, as far as having a say so, instead always relying on the county to be our voice with the ambulance service, so with this, we proceeded on and did an RFP process, where we received five proposals back in early October, we evaluated those based on the things that are important to, to what we feel is important to us and the citizens of Biloxi, and the visitors, response times, the amount of ambulances in the city at all times, accountability for those ambulances, special event response, you know, natural and man-made disaster response, just to name a few of the aspects of it. Of those five, two were pretty much eliminated right out the gate for, you know, various reasons, we continued on with Patford, AMR, and Acadian as the three that had really good, you know, proposals, we went through a, a process of Q and A session between us and the provider, the providers, where we had some clarification on our part, on our proposal, and, and they clarified some of their aspects of their proposal, then we moved into pretty much a, a one-on, I say one-on-one, but they brought in their leadership, and we had our leadership, where the mayor attended, we attended, police attended, and we had, you know, legal representation there, they brought the same, we were able to really kinda get into the details of those proposals, and, you know, through that process, and after those three meetings, you know, we sat down with the mayor and determined that this was the best route to go for, for what we were looking at and what was proposed.
So, what do we guarantee is gonna be better than what we had before?
So, you know, some of the, some of the, you know, easy aspects to kinda point out that are really, were really important to us, is they will embed with the, with the fire department, with our fire department, they, they have committed to a, like, basically a public-private partnership, where, you know, essentially, it's going to have everybody meshed together, it's almost the best of both worlds for us, where they will still privately run this, but when we're all together, it, it's gonna bring the two teams together, to me, a lot better, you'll be sitting across the dinner table, our captains and crews will be sitting across the dinner table from their paramedics and their EMTs, discussing better ways to, to operate on scene, training together, it will actually reduce some of the wear and tear on our vehicles, when it's some of these priority two calls that are, that are not necessarily life-threatening, you know, they will respond, our trucks will stay in the station or back them up for life-threatening instances, you know, we'll have better accountability.
Yeah, from Nick, it'd be fair to say, you know, the responsiveness, as far as the response time that is guaranteed and the fine structure that's related to, you know, i- if it's missed, I think was a, a significant factor in this evaluation, but we did, you know, with their leadership, and, and looked at every aspect of what Biloxi is, Biloxi's a little bit different than the county, and we have, you know, a, a population that is structured a little bit different, and we have our, the number of responses that we had, put us in a situation where we need to do, address some things in, in a different manner, and I think that's, this, this contract that will be ironed out, will have those needs defined.
So how many ambulances that we'll have available from them at each fire station? How many fire stations we're gonna do?
Six, I think.
So we are guaranteed a minimum of five at any, any given point throughout the time, and, and Patford is here, if y'all would like to speak with them and ask them as far as anything concerning that, but we will have five running out of fire stations, since our fire stations are strategically located throughout the city anyway.
So we have them at World Market on the Point downtown, you'll have it spread out.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And they'll be sitting at the fire station.
In busier times, summer times and all that, they, it will expand, we could have up to eight throughout the city, so, and could even get greater than that.
And what is this, that Steve Delahoussaye said about AMR was tied in with FEMA, so these, are these people not tied in with FEMA?
I can let them answer that, Terry, would you wanna come up and speak to that? Terry is with, with Patford, he can speak on behalf of how they handle that with their aspect.
I didn't quite hear the question, sir.
And they brought up about the point that AMR is tied in with FEMA, that they work with FEMA, and I'm trying to find, are y'all involved the same way with FEMA, MEMA, whoever it is?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we just deployed just over a hun, hundred ambulances in Florida this past hurricane season, we do have the federal contracts to deploy, we have an extensive disaster response system within our company, we have a disaster response specialist works for us, we intend to stage some disaster, disaster response resources here on the coast, pre-stage, so to speak, so we're able to address that if we need to. The ambulance companies as a whole, all the companies, they're all great companies serving many communities across our nation, but they all provide ambulances in the event of a disaster, so, once something, especially in Florida, the Gulf Coast hits, you'll see the ambulance companies come together to provide those resources.
So you're saying, it doesn't matter if you tie it with FEMA?
Yes.
So you're just saying you're gonna do it anyway?
Yes, sir, we're gonna, we're gonna deploy.
The hurricanes in it?
Yes.
Like Florida, we have a lot of hurricane.
Yes, sir.
Those, we have those events happen pretty much every few years.
That's correct.
So we have to have the ambulance service or somebody to make sure we can take care of that, and you can provide that also.
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Anyway, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
There we go. What is the current cost to the, to the, be patient with me, what, what is the current cost of the city now, for the ambulance service that we've had for the past several years? What, what does it cost the city?
So with this proposal, just like AMRs and Acadians, when we got them, there is no, there is no direct subsidy being paid, the only thing that we will, the city will contribute is approximately around seventy four hundred dollars annually, and that is to what is called the EMSOF fund, which is the Emergency Medical Service Operating Fund that the state of Mississippi established back in nineteen eighty-two, what happens is we will contribute seventy four hundred dollars annually, the city will contribute, it, it ends up being around thirty one or thirty two thousand, isn't that about right, Zach? So we'll have, and, and what that fund does is we will work with the ambulance service, and it's something that the county has done with AMR for many, many years, and it allows you to purchase things such as the light pack fifteens that we, that our paramedics carry, you purchase hardware, you can't purchase soft goods, you can use it for training, EMS training, sort of things.
So, so basically, right now, we, we budget somewhere thirty one or thirty two thousand?
We budget seventy four hundred.
Seventy four hundred, but that goes into a, a fund.
Yes, sir.
A, a match, if you will, I guess.
Yes, sir, fifteen cents per capita.
Right, so would that figure change if we switch to Patford?
No, sir.
The cost would still be the same?
State legislated.
Okay, and I know Mr. Weatherford, I believe, was interested in, you know, would there be any tax increase because of this fragmented system, and we don't anticipate a tax increase, are there disadvantages with a fragmented system? What are the disadvantages, can anybody speak to that?
So for Biloxi, a fragmented system, as it stands now, there is no, there is no disadvantage for us, as far as like an additional cost from that aspect, now, if, 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 like he said, if there are three different systems, it could very well cost people residing in the county, where they don't have the, the population to support a, a non-subsidized system, they could potentially be, but I, I can't speak to that because it's all, I can't predict the future.
Right, well, and we're just concerned about Biloxi, it's nice to consider the other.
Correct.
Communities, but then, we're just primarily concerned with Biloxi.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, that being said, this became an issue, it was raised before the council several months ago, before this process began, and the primary, maybe the only reason, I may not be, but the primary reason was what, as I recall, it was just the response time, the length of response time, and, and I, I think I've, I receive reports, I'm assuming the other council members did as well, from AMR, and there was some concern about, I guess, here's the response times, but there are reasons why we discard this response time in the data, is that, would that be accurate?
Yes, sir.
You know, whatever those reasons were, is, is, and maybe Patford can answer this question, are, are they going to present the same data with the same, I guess, points of clarification, where they disregard sometimes, some response times and averaging their response? Is there any difference in the reports we'll see, in terms of, of the accuracy and determining a true response time?
Absolutely, so what we, what we've done is, in the contract, we've, we've stipulated ten minutes and fifteen minutes, ten minutes for a life-threatening emergency, fifteen minutes for non-life-threatening emergency, so, response time exceptions is what you're referring to, and what we call them, so yes, that was always a, a sticking point when we were, you know, trying to work through some of the delays in past years, and a lot of times, we didn't have much say because we didn't have our own EMS district, it was all run through the county, and we didn't know what the contract act actually stipulated. With this new contract, we'll be able to hammer out those, and what Patford has committed to is that every, every morning at two AM, we will get the raw data of each call that happens in the city of Biloxi, it will be sent to my email and a couple other key personnel, we'll be able to evaluate that when we get into the office, if there's any problem, I'll be calling Terry or one of the team, Patford team, to just an operations manager of sorts, to discuss it and try to determine whether it's valid or not, at that point, once we've agreed upon whether it's valid or not, then we can go forward, and they've committed to certain penalties if it is not a valid.
Okay.
Exception.
And I, I may have, I may have presented that question a little differently, but my, my guess is that AMR complied with the agreement with the county, I mean, they were doing, what they were doing was satisfactory under the terms of the agreement with the county, but I take it that the response time regardless was in, deemed insufficient by the city administration, and then the administration started looking at a request for proposals, can, can we improve the response time, that's your, our primary concern, the safety and welfare of the, of the citizens here, so that's, that's what drove the issue, you briefly described the process, if I understood you correctly, AMR, Acadia, and Patford each sat down with the administrative team here, and, and their team, and talked about things, and hashed some things out.
Yes, sir.
To be clear, and answer any questions that came up, and after all of that, your, your best recommendation as it is, is for Patford, that's accurate?
That's right, and I think Nick did a great job in, in defining, you know, the responsiveness, the guarantee of responsiveness, the fines when or not, but the raw data was a big commitment, and the, the, you know, the, the location of, of the ambulance, and so we'll know exactly how many ambulances are in town, at any one point in town, and, and where we can expect where the problem issues will happen, in, you know, in a more timely manner.
Councilman, you nailed it, it's really a difference between us being part of a county contract, we had very little ability to manipulate or judge, and our own contract, so, now, I, when I want, asked Nick to make sure he addressed this, realize, as, after you, if you approve this resolution today, we will officially be into a mobilization period, a transitional period that will run to approximately the first of February, and AMR has been graciously said that they would, they would respond, continue to respond as long as, until we were ready to start.
Let me ask also, I mean, let me throw out too, that, you know, you've all seen it, you know, a number of times, especially at the seven thousand or six thousand hotel rooms that we've had, two of our fire trucks are, are, are there when a medical emergency, we have a, a greater opportunity with this situation to, you know, eliminate or minimize the amount of equipment and personnel, and, you know, be as, as responsive as we, as anyone can possibly can to our visitors or our residents in, in, in these emergency times.
Madam President, I got a question for Patrick, so, might as well go directly to the source here, get you out of the way, get you out of line of fire, I got a couple of questions, so, I'm gonna ask this a little more direct than my councilman on the left, the response times, what seemed to be skewing some of those response times is that a supervisor would show up at the event, and that, appearance of that supervisor. a supervisor would show up at the event, and that, uh, appearance of that supervisor by the previous, uh, by the current provider would be logged in as the response time. Is your response time gonna be, uh, from a supervisor arriving on scene in a truck? Or is it gonna be from the actual emergency ambulance and, and your EMRs that are gonna be on, onsite?
Yes, sir, that's a good question. Uh, we're, we are planning to deploy what we call a QRV, a Supervisor Paramedic Response Vehicle for Quick Response. Now, when the, uh, QRV arrives on scene, uh, that'll be noted into the CAD, and, uh, the raw data will be sent over to the Fire Chief and his group to evaluate. However, the, the, the thing that I want to emphasize about this system that makes it a little bit different is the thing we call trending and constant evaluation of this system. We, I can sit here today and tell you that we're gonna deploy this system and not have any problems. That's just not true. We're gonna, we're gonna be hit with some issues that we're gonna have to adjust to. What makes our system so unique is the ability for us to immediately adjust. Now, to answer your question, if the QRV, and this is the sprint unit gets there, the CAD will note the QRV gets there, and that point of time that will stop until the transport gets there. Then the CAD will note when the transport unit gets there and takes the patient. Now, that doesn't negate the fact that we still have a honor and responsibility to get a transport unit there in a timely manner, because that is what we're, our ultimate goal is, is to move that patient to the hospital. So, this is where the collaboration with the Fire Department is gonna be so unique. We're gonna be able to identify any issues. If a quick response vehicle stops in the time and it's twenty minutes before a transport unit arrives, we're gonna know immediately, and we're gonna address the problem immediately. It's not gonna be a continuing trend, because we wanna get patient care as fast as possible. That could be that paramedic in that QR, QRV, but we also wanna get that patient to an ER to get them treated as fast as possible. So ideally, we have to narrow any margins there that may try to exist on stopping the clock and transport. If we see any trending, that's the key in this, that indicates that we're stopping a clock with a sprint vehicle without a transport, it'll be addressed immediately. Now, one unique thing about Pafford is there's five people run this company in the state of Louisiana, Mississippi. Four of them are here today. Uh, we have direct contact, the Fire Chief will have direct contact with us, and we can address problems immediately and not have to push them up a long chain of, uh, people to agree or to approve us to add another ambulance or, or move an ambulance. Uh, one thing I also wanna emphasize is we have a system in central Mississippi that's contracted just like this one for five ambulances. Immediately, we've seen the need that, for another ambulance, five wouldn't accommodate the, the workload. So, the contract sets the minimum amount, but if another ambulance is needed to meet that need, we're not gonna say we're, we're bound by this contract, we're gonna put the other ambulance up. Currently, we're running seven ambulances in an area where contracted to run five. Again, it goes back to trending the need of the community and meeting those specific needs.
Right. Next question I have, um, it was brought up about air service or a helicopter or a transport by air. Can you guarantee what resources that you have as far as a helicopter response or a air service? Transport response?
Yes, sir. Uh, with, in our systems, we run, we don't have a Pafford helicopter in every area that we're running ground transport. Uh, we collaborate with the, the local areas, and like, for example, in central Mississippi, we collaborate with two different, uh, providers there to provide helicopter service. So, we'll, we'll dispatch to, uh, request a helicopter through the dispatch center for the helicopter that's located here to dispatch for the care of that patient on the ground if needed.
Do you know, in the contract, what response time, is there a required response time for that resource?
I, I believe, let me ask Mr. Parker, isn't it thirty? I think it's thirty minutes in the contract, right? I, I think so, yes, sir.
Okay, and then if the, if there's a non-performance or underperformance, is there an out in this contract or a remedy?
Yes, there are, yes, there are for response times for any other, uh, like failure to, uh, stay, failure stage or, or, um, properly equipped vehicles, there are pe- uh, penalties in the contract for things of that nature. So, yes.
Alright, so my last question. In a nutshell, uh, it sounds like you bitted on this, and we're very interested in, in the Biloxi, uh, you know, area.
Yes, sir.
Why? What makes you, what makes you the best candidate for Biloxi?
Well, Biloxi is a very unique city. It's not, it's, it's not just a city that stands alone like many cities in the state where there, here you have the influx of tourism that's just amazing. The amount of people coming into Gulfport on a weekly basis throughout the year, uh, really, uh, makes the city shine. Uh, we operate in fourteen different counties across, uh, Mississippi. Uh, each one of the, each one of the cities and areas we operate in is different. Biloxi is different in a lot of, lot of respects. We, we feel excited about this partnership because it puts us in, in the situation to be a part of a community, to be a part of that event structure, to address that event structure. We have some ideas on how to better serve that, and to give Biloxi a better service, uh, overall in emergency response, and then the collaboration with the Fire Department. Uh, we've done, we've been doing this since two thousand fifteen. It is the best system that we've seen in emergency medical, uh, service since I've been doing this in thirty-two years.
Okay.
Any other?
One last thing. I know it's not written anywhere, but is there any way you can guarantee us every six month, you got these four guys, they want to y'all come back, but we can directly talk to you about any problems we have in six months, every six months? Are y'all willing to do that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We'll, we'll come back every month if you.
No, no, you got.
Call us in essence.
You gotta work a few things out first. I'm just saying, when you sit down, when people have questions, that we can direct them directly to y'all.
Yes, sir, we, we'll commit to that. Uh, at any time you request us to come to speak to the board, we'll be glad to. Um, we, we intend on evaluating this system through a selected group, uh, over the next three to six months to make sure that the needs are being met. Uh, it's pretty easy to put on paper that we're gonna do this, this, and this. The, the issues become, when you do this, this, and this, what did we miss? So, the evaluation of this system is very important, especially the first six months. I'll tell you, and I commit to you today, we'll make some changes. We'll have to. You know, we're, we will miss something, or something we'll need to add to, or, or, collaborate with the Fire Department to do better, but we commit to that.
That happens in everything we do, so that's why I'm just asking y'all, requesting that from y'all, to make sure that every six months that we make a phone call and y'all step, y'all come back and explain, are there any other council changes, another change, and how's it going with y'all?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gaines?
Yes, um, my, my question be for the Fire Chiefs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, uh, just two questions. Um, uh, reports, I think it'll be, uh, appropriate if we have like a quarterly report of the transactions between, uh, the different groups. And then my second question is, well, that was a statement, but my question would be, um, you mentioned five to eight ambulances that they would, uh, provide us. What is, what is, uh, AMR doing now?
Uh, so they, it's, it's hard to say, um, they may be able to answer it a little bit better. Um, so theirs is more of an algorithm, they use a, a posting schedule, so, you know, different times of the day, different, you know, days of the week. Um, they have postings, might be Veterans in Ninety, um, Porter in Ninety, uh, Cedar and Pops, uh, those three might be stood up, there might be additional spots throughout the city if it's a Friday, Saturday, uh, there might be a reduction, uh, say Gulfport has a, a call, uh, in the east side of Gulfport, they could take the Veterans in Ninety, send them that way. So, it's, uh, I don't wanna speak on behalf of them, that, that's what makes this system a little bit better. We'll know for a fact that we always have five, um, that's what makes us so excited, um, about this system, uh, where we have a little bit more, uh, knowledge of where everything is.
And they will be working right out of your fire station.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I do have another, what happens if you, and this is for Patrick? What happens if you run out of ambulances?
Run out of the, the ambulances?
If you run out of ambulances, if, if we have a need and, and you can't, uh, supply the ambulance.
As we have a, we have a redundancy, a component built in that we're gonna stage more than the required ambulances here, and we have a call-up, just like any other system, that will call up additional personnel to come in. Now, this would be in case of, say, like a mass casualty incident, or, uh, something that would be outside the norm. Our, our idea is, and our, our plan is, is to trend the program as we develop it and see what the actual need is. Uh, the number that we have put in the contract was based on the numbers we collected over the last couple of months on the data that's being going on, that goes on in Biloxi, and, uh, we feel like this number would adequately, uh, address, uh, the medical EMS response issues within the city limits. Uh, I, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you we're not gonna run out of ambulances in some incidents. Uh, there may be a case where we have six or seven simultaneous calls going on at one time.
Let me jump in, that's called saturation, right?
That's right. That's what I mean. System saturation is a term on an exemption that's used often, and the, the little bit of difference we did on the system saturation exemption is it will only, it can only apply if we've staffed to our contractual minimum, and if the Fire Chief or the EMS Coordinator approves the exemption. So, we can't claim it when we have, um, two trucks up and, uh, for example, we have six calls. We can't, we can't claim that exemption, because we're not staffing it on what we agreed to staff it at. Does that answer your question?
That answers it. Uh, Steve, I got a question for you. So, so, and I know this is your, your competition, and, and we, we certainly appreciate, uh, AMR, uh, if, if this, if it does pass, uh, to, to help them with the transition, but uh, what are, what are some of the advantages that we have with you that we're gonna miss if we do make this, uh, move? What are the big glaring ones?
Well, we do not necessarily consider them competition. We are the largest, they're not the second largest.
I, I get it.
In conclusion to that, um, it is of great benefit to have a fluid system throughout the county, as Mr. Weatherford, I believe, mentioned. If you have a wreck today, if Pafford is your provider, you have a wreck today in front of Edgeware Mall, and they, uh, occupy all five ambulances there, and Biloxi has its own agreement, and the rest of Harrison County, it has another provider, whether it be us, Academy, whoever, if they have another provider, and they have three ambulances sitting around near the, uh, Naval Retirement Home, those ambulances will not be able to allow to be, to cross the Bee's Road to come and assist Biloxi. Whereas now, heart attacks, car wrecks, train wrecks, do not recognize geopolitical boundaries. And with regard to the idea of stationing ambulances at, at fire stations, while that may sound like a good idea, there's a reason you don't have a fire station on I-110. There are a lot of wrecks on I-110. We have ambulances stationed nearby there. We don't station ambulances where there are a lot of fires. We have our, when, when, if a call comes in today in Pascrees Chan, chances are every ambulance in our system is going to move a little bit to shift to cover that area. Same is true if a couple of calls happen in Biloxi right now, ambulances that way are going to shift. They're not going to abandon those areas, but they're going to be fluid to shift. So, the idea of having fixed locations, uh, for fire stations is absolutely correct. That is the correct idea. You don't have police stations at every different ward. You have essential police stations, and if you notice, your police cars are fluid. They, they travel around and they do statistics to determine where, when keystone traffic lets out, where there may be, may be more accidents, or if there may be more DUIs. So, the police department is fluid in where it positions its, um, police cars. We do the same thing with ambulances. We do not subscribe to the concept that fixed locations for ambulances is a good idea, because once I, once again, I said, um, heart attacks, car wrecks, they do not recognize geopolitical boundaries, and neither does AMR. And with, I don't think the gentleman answered the question, do they have a helicopter to do medevac missions today on the coast? I can tell you unequivocally, the answer is no. They do not. We do have that capability of doing that. The other thing that you have to consider, you have a good, pretty good healthcare system on the coast, but a lot of stuff has to go to Mobile, or it has to go to New Orleans. When that ambulance goes out of town, it's go- it's going to be gone for a couple of hours. So, that ambulance is out of the system. While they may commit five ambulances to the city of Biloxi, if one goes to USA Mobile and one is going over to Tulane, you have three ambulances left. Are they going to be able to pull ambulances from Gulfport, DeIverville, rural Harrison County? No, they won't, they will not have that capability. Other questions?
I just wanna say, Steve, that was a good point at the last bit there, but, no offense, um, there is a reason why our Fire Department is always first before the ambulances are. Anyone else? Call for the question, all in favor? Six one?
I'm abstaining.
Nathan abstaining. Moving on to the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Second by Mr. Gaines. Anything to discuss, Mr. Nathan?
Uh, no, I have nothing on the consent.
Mr. Clavon?
I'm good.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, there was an addition to the agenda item, uh, to the, uh, consent agenda, item O, um, which is a reappointment to the Planning Commission. I'm in- interested to see if there's any further discussion on this. I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of that, I just, it's my position. I don't, I don't know where everybody else is on this, but I'm happy to listen to discussion, if anybody has any.
Okay. Mr. Demming? Mr. Gaines?
Mr. Lawrence? Speaking of O, um, I have somebody that, when this first come up, that said he would be willing to serve, George Burdo. He lives in Ward One, been born and raised in Ward One, so, what I like to do is just go ahead and table this, and this, he's already expired, his term, August Walker expired in July, and then our next meeting, I'll have a resolution on the table with George Burdo. So, I'd actually just like to table five O to get it, get it off the table completely. So, I'd make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any conversation? Mr. Demming?
Just a little. I think, um, I'm not sure what the, what the concern with August Parker is. Everybody else seems to define that he has a great job on the Planning Commission, he's served the city for many years. Um, what I think is going on is August Parker's vote to support certain short-term rentals. And while he has actually voted to deny some, he's also voted to approve many that George disagrees with. Now, keep in mind, this council, this council has both agreed with and disapproved recommendations by the Planning Commission, but, but outside of short-term rentals, August Parker has served faithfully, he takes his time out of his personal life. These people don't get paid a lot of money to be honest, this is almost a voluntary position. He has done this, he's asked the hard questions, he's been a, he's been a driving force in the approval and the denial of a lot of projects that have come across the Planning Commission's table. Um, I think this is a more of a personal vendetta or, um, a direct, um, response to an issue with short-term rentals. I don't, I can't imagine why we aren't approving August Parker to continue to serve on the Planning Commission as he has been for, I don't know, twenty-something years. Um, I would ask this council to deny this motion to table, and let's, let's, uh, reappoint August Parker immediately. That's all I have.
Well, I'd, uh, respond on that, please. The thing we have with, there's so many people in Ward One that oppose what he's been, the way he's been voting, to a lot of things up in, not just Ward One, and different, well, we worry about Ward One, 'cause that's, I'm dealing with them. And a lot of people, yes, he served twenty-something years, but a lot of people just don't appreciate the way he's voted, really against the majority of the people, when they oppose something or even stand for it. even stand for it, one way or the other. So that's the one reason. And I have another man that's well qualified, that to take the job is willing to do it. And I just think it's the time for a change. And that's why I'm supporting George Burdo. And then when the vote against August Walker, I was just trying to let it subdue the call because his term had expired already in July 16th through 2023. So I'm asking the council to send up the people in Ward One. That's what we're supposed to do, support the people in Ward One. Thank you.
Any other discussion, Mr. Demming?
I just, and this is very petty, but George, a time to change, how long have you been serving on this council?
Me? I've been elected six times. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I've been elected six times. You know, people voted me in, six times. So that, you can add that up if you want. I've been in a long time, correct?
Can we call for the question?
All the question on the motion to table, item O. Well, first, we've got to take it off the agenda, on the consent agenda? Okay. All in favor of tabling it? Three? All opposed? That's denied, so we'll leave it on the consent agenda. Anything else that anyone needs to discuss?
So, let me actually, we've on this here. The man that won the serve, you want to come to him, we rejected him.
You know, we had a conversation about August. I put him up. He's still up there for consideration. It was my appointment to reappoint all those folks who have served diligently over the last years. And I was, you know, it's up to the council to look at that, that choice. It was, you know, the administration provided those names and it's up for confirmation or not confirmation.
No, I just think it's time, there's a lot of changes on the board. I mean, you just can't keep speaking to the same people for the last 25, 30 years and nothing changing. Time's changing, people change, wards are changing. So what we're doing is just being the same one backing in. It's been there, most of them have been sitting there 25 years. So you, just to me, it's not the right thing to do, so.
All right. Call for the question on the consent agenda? All in favor? Unanimous? Unanimous vote on that? Consent agenda?
I'm going to vote against.
George is going to take against.
I think you got two. That's against it. Paul, did you?
Yeah, I would, that would be my exception as well. I would vote no on item O.
Lawrence, Guines, and Tisdale is.
I don't know.
What?
Tisdale and Lawrence.
Oh, okay. Tisdale and Lawrence are against item O. Anyone else have any exceptions? All right, we'll move on to code enforcement.
Item A on the agenda, Shakina Kennedy, 6236 Shady Creek Drive, that case has been resolved. Item B, Rita Joan Kalasovich, 195 Oak Street, that case has been resolved. Item C, Kathy T. Nguyen, 220 Wisteria Lane, that case has been resolved. Item D, Pops and Jam Lane Biloxi LLC, Zero Pops Ferry Road, this property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Pops and Jam Lane Biloxi, Zero Pops Ferry Road? If not, this case is closed.
Item E, Ray Roy Ray LLC, 239 Howard Avenue, that case has been resolved.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion on the routine agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? Mr. Lawrence?
Say again?
Any discussion on the routine agenda?
Yeah. I'm voting against August Walker.
On the routine?
Routine? Okay.
Come on up, Paul. I'll take his place. Come on up. I got your place.
All right, I thought you were going back to the open on the exceptions.
I'm going to let you get a refresh map for next year. All right. All right, well, give it up, Paul.
Good afternoon, council. Almost got out of him. Almost. Well, with perfect timing, MEMA was well aware of our Tuesday meeting. So yesterday, on Monday, the city received $978,000 from MEMA in reimbursements.
All right.
And we have our next conference call with MEMA and FEMA this Thursday, and we'll continue to discuss the projects going forward and additional funding.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm taking George White. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other discussion on the routine agenda? All in favor? Unanimous vote? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.